Rodriguez asked Councilman Canoier Jr. to make a, uh, he wanted to do his action first. Um, probably for the, uh, where the remove the stain. So there's only two things I've got to take action on if you, if you want to do that. So, um, uh, for the remove the stain, uh, what, what? It's a letter of support and we could write that, uh, from our office and we could send that letter, but we just need council approval on that, I guess.
Motion.
Okay, motion, motion.
To have the, um, chef president's office write a letter of support.
Motion as a second, second by Councilman Carlo, Councilman Jopin Eagle, uh, to, to, to that letter of support for the Remove the Stain Act.
Yes.
Okay. And then Councilman Canoier Jr., if you want to say anything else. Okay. So, uh, uh, any discussion hearing done, Secretary, call it all, please.
Blaine Little Thunder? Clara Whitehorse? Yes. Ryan Jopin Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoier Junior?
Yes.
Austin Locken Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBrey? Ron DeBrey? James Cross? Hello, John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Pugh? Jackie Sears? Michael Carlo Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yep.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ron DeBrey? It, it's a motion to have the president's office write a letter of support for the Remove the Stain Act.
Okay, council, that motion passes seventeen four one on voting, thank you, council. Uh, Councilman Carlo, do you want to do your item right now? Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion not only to request, but, you know, to require the BIA to complete a new assessment at the Justice Center and the Corrections or Repairs immediately for cost analysis and, um, approval of funding.
Motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Uh, Councilman Youngman, Councilman Dreamer, second.
I'm going to do a second one, separate.
All right, uh, there's a second. Uh, so Councilman Dreamer and Councilman Youngman, second. Any discussion? Hearing none.
This is Jackie. Yes, I just got, I just got back on, but what was the motion?
Um, go ahead, Secretary, if you want to read it.
Motion to request and require the Bureau of Indian Affairs to do a assessment on the Justice Center for Cost Analysis and Funding.
Corrections too.
And corrections.
How about the Kyle one? Both courthouses, okay. So, you know, Kyle and Brendan. Okay, uh, for any further discussion, hearing none, Secretary, if you call it all, please, thank you.
Blaine Little Thunder? Clara Whitehorse? Yes. Ryan Jopin Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoier Junior?
Yes.
Austin Locken Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBrey?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Hello, John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Pugh?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oha.
Michael Carlo Senior? Garfield Still?
Yep.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Seventeen.
Okay, so he has, so we're not voting the council, uh, Councilman Carlo.
Yes, Mr. Chair, too, I believe, uh, Cora was right earlier when she said that assessments had been done several years ago. So I think that we need to make sure that those are included in that assessment so they can see, you know, what the cost analysis was then compared to now. Because there are a lot of items out there that need to be addressed, not only in Pine Ridge and Kyle, but, you know, total. My second motion, Mr. Chairman, is that the BIA do an analysis and a cost assessment on the water and sewer at the road department, transportation, and that immediate cost analysis for the approval of funding be done immediately.
Second.
Okay, okay, uh, second by Councilman Whitehorse, on that motion, quick, Councilman.
I think that there needs to also be a review of the history on that because that was previously approved. And, um, I'm not sure exactly how that happened, but when John Long was the superintendent, he did say that would get done, and then there was a problem with the contracting process and they, we're trying to work with the tribe's water and sewer program, but they did not have the, um, the materials necessary. And, um, they were trying to do a cost reimbursement where the water and sewer program would do it and then they would pay us back, which probably would have never happened anyway. So I think there needs to be a history done on that, and, um, I think that we should have the point here to answer because that has been ongoing for, this is like the third term now.
Okay, um, thanks. Uh, we could ask him, uh, we could ask him at our next meeting that we have at the end of the month. So we'll send those letters out and then at least he'll, he'll have some correspondence to follow up on, you know, so, um, Councilman.
I was just going to see if the motion maker could include the Kyle Road Department in his motion. Well, I don't know, but yeah.
Okay, so that was amended? Okay, uh, Secretary made a note. Uh, anything else, any other discussion on this, Council?
I think to make sure in those motions, I stated immediately, so, you know, those can be forwarded.
Um, anything else, Council? Hearing none, uh, Secretary, can you call it all, please?
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Clara Whitehorse? Yes. Ryan Jopin Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canoier Junior?
Yes.
Austin Locken Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBrey?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Hello, John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud?
Yes.
David Pugh?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oha.
Michael Carlo Senior?
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez?
Yes.
Garfield?
Yeah.
Ellen?
Yes.
All right, Council, I'm motion passed eighteen four one on voting, uh, thank you, council. Uh, so that, that takes here the action items that we had on, on the agenda or my ass, whatever, uh, that we, that we passed in two thirds. So I think that's it. Uh, so we'll move on to item number seven. Uh, is there a motion for that, uh, Councilman?
Is, I'd like to make a motion that we refer this to the district chair, district chairman. How many times do they, do they meet? Once a month, twice a month?
About once a month for Crazy Horse Planning Commission, yeah.
Till, for sixty days.
Okay.
That we're giving them twice a month.
Okay, okay.
Chairman.
Uh, go ahead, uh, Councilman Steele.
Wha- what is this issue or sending to the chairmans?
It's the boundaries.
You know, we, we talked about this issue and, um, as a, as a chairman of, um, the Crazers Planning Commission, I, I, I was chairman for about three or four years. You know, we had numerous, numerous meetings over this and we just couldn't get Walkbomby and Pine Ridge to the table. And if you read the constitution, it says that the, the districts would come forward with those, um, those ordinances, um, defining their boundaries, but, you know, we, it's a situation where, you know, the districts won't come to the table on, on, and it's, and it's mainly Walkbomby and Pine Ridge. They will never come to the table on where the, the, the actual boundary is and, you know, the more, I, I, this is my honest opinion. We're, we're wasting sixty days by sending it to the Crazers Planning Commission because it's not going to get done. And then no offense to the chairmans, but it's just, it's something bigger than just these chairmans dealing with it. I think, you know, as council reps, it's our, our obligation that, you know, we have to get this done because the, the Supreme Court, you know, they, they, they sent that order, said there's no defined boundaries that, the more we just keep putting it to the side like this, we'll never get it done. And I think we're just, we're just, you know, giving, giving someone else the ball when we should be running with it. Like I said, we, we, we tried it as chairmans for a long time and it was just Pine Ridge and Walkbomby. I think, um, I think this is the responsibility of the land committee. I think land committees should get together with some and create a little subcommittee from underland and then try to get all these districts going together because I, there was never an issue with porcupine, um, wounded knee, ogalala, you know, wa- medicine, all those other, what it boiled down to is where the boundary lines were in Pine Ridge and Walkbomby. So I, I don't think, and I don't feel comfortable with us just giving it back to the chairmans because, once again, we're, we're going to waste time. I think we should create a subcommittee under land, uh, land, the land committee and, and move forward with it, but that's just my own opinion. Um, and I know some of you guys would probably have a, a different opinion, but I'm, I'm just telling you guys, we're wasting another sixty days by sending it back to the chairmans.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, for the discussion, Council. Uh, Councilwoman Whitehorse and Councilman Carlo.
You know, I, I agree with what Garfield is saying. I, I think that it needs to be in a different format because sending it back to the district chairs is, is not working. Can you hear me? Better? Okay. Sending it back to the district chairs is not working. And I mean, it's been years and years and years and years. I think it might be time for the land committee or the council, whichever works, to, um, bring in the Crazy Horse Planning Commission and have a working session, an actual working session. And the boundaries that, um, are okay should be approved by ordinance. And the boundaries that are not okay, we need to make a decision on them somehow. Either we come to a consensus at that working session or, um, we just combine the districts. I'm just kidding. I know that would might, that might cause a war. But really, I, I don't, I don't think just sending it back is working and we need to take a new route. So my suggestion is a working session.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman. So I got Councilman Carlo and Councilman, uh, Yellowboy and Councilman Pugh, uh, go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I think this is bigger than the land committee itself and it, and it has to be involvement by not only our representatives, but our district officials when we do this working session. Because right now, some of the boundary lines that are, are there is going to have a major impact on the representation in some of our districts. It could increase or decrease some of them. So I, I believe that, you know, that working session should involve all the representatives, members of your administration and elected officials in the districts.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Yellowboy, Councilman Pugh, Councilwoman Carl and Councilwoman Sears.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, as, as a former chair of the Aurora District and, and what Councilman Steele stated was, was very true. You know, we, we sat time and time again because at one time that administration said, complete your district boundaries and we'd come and we'd sit, we'd have these meetings and during the break, I explained to you guys, you know, there was no problem between white clay, wounded knee, porcupine, so forth. It boiled down to Walkbomby and Pine Ridge. And so, and we did our best to support those districts and trying to get them to sit at the table and say, hey, you know, we did our part, you guys have that conversation and then by that time, elections came, different district chairs came in. And so I do agree, a different format needs to be done. Um, yesterday in Law and Order, I got very verbal with the chief judge and, you know, we, I stated that we start projects, but we don't finish them. And, you know, we need to sit down and I do agree with Council Representative Carlo here is, you know, let's have a working session, let's sit down with these entities and figure out and, and actually get this done. And I know it's going to be referenced as, well, back in nineteen ninety-eight, there was a secretarial election that eliminated the district boundaries. But when they did that, it opened it up where, okay, I can go run for council in Porcupine District or I can go get my signatures in Kyle and where is the root? And there are Supreme Court cases that were ruled in that way. And so if we're going to do that, then let's amend the constitution and let's be at large, voted in at large if we're not going to redo the boundaries. But, you know, that's where I stand and, you know, we need to sit down and have this working session and, and get it to where the boundaries are reestablished. Because right now our membership can say, well, that's wounded knee boundary and, and actual, actuality, there isn't a boundary line. So I do agree, we need to have a working session, sit down with, you know, the, the respective entities that can be contributing, um, factors into reestablishing our boundary lines. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Pugh, Councilwoman Carlo and Councilwoman Sears.
I guess the reason I'm saying that is everybody must have dropped the ball because the district chairs never brought anything back. Think descriptions could have been given between ogalala, wounded knee, porcupine, and left Pine Ridge and Walkbomby out and made them one, that's, that they can't agree. But we need to do something to work on the boundary lines because it's messing with our elections. And we can't wait until next July or August to deal with it. So if it's not going to go to the district, uh, Crazers Planning Commission, then we need to do something immediately instead of waiting until the last minute. Because something should have came saying, okay, from that Crazers Planning Commission, said, we can't agree to disagree. So that maybe whatever administration that was, where they could have worked on the boundary line issue because it's a problem out there. I mean, it's going to be a problem for elections because like Tyler said, if nothing's stopping him from running for a representative, Pine Ridge, Porcupine, Eagle Nest, where, wherever, with no boundary lines. But I just wanted to give the opportunity for the districts to come up with something, but I'm going to agree with it. If, if the, if the council wants to sit down, it's the district representatives because I know some of the districts don't have an executive committee even. So those district representatives are going to have to take the ball and run with it and take the blame for establishing a boundary line that nobody agrees on. But we have, the point that I'm trying to get is that we have to do it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Sears, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Carlo, then Councilwoman Sears and then Councilwoman Steele.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I agree with everything that's been said and, and I think, Dave, if you would change that to just thirty days, um, I think we need to put a little pressure on and, and, um, see if we can expedite that. But, um, I do feel that we do have new executive boards and I think that we should just show them that courtesy and see if they can come together and come to a consensus and, um, we can put this on the agenda for land committee and our chairman can, our chairman from land committee can get a letter out to our, to the two respective districts. Because I, as a lifelong member of Pine Ridge, am not going to be limited to the four-way. I tell you that right now. I'm not going to sit here and listen to Pine Ridge is the four-way. That's, that's not going to happen. Right? And I don't believe, um, my district will stand for it. So if you could just change it to thirty days, I'll second your motion.
Let's accept that. Okay, uh, motion's amended to, uh, for thirty days. Um, so I got Councilwoman Sears and then Councilwoman Steele.
Yes, um, I just wanted to, um, I don't know if some of you remember, but, uh, when the constitution was amended regarding the boundaries, I think Walkbomby was the first ones at the table with their paperwork and their resolution to be passed. But the other districts, all the other districts, never produced anything, so they had to table our, um, you know, our paperwork that we brought forth. So I just wanted to remind the, you know, remind you that, you know, Walkbomby was first ones to get it done. And, you know, I think out of courtesy, we do need to take it back to our districts because I for myself ain't going to make that decision without my district members having input. So, you know, we got a lot of elders in our community that know our, our boundaries. So I would like to bring that back, um, with the timeline, of course, you know, to get our people meeting. And last administration of the executive board, um, our chairperson did bring that back to our district and we did discuss the boundaries and we were working on them, I believe with, uh, Mr. Yellowboo was a part of that team in our, in our district, uh, Wendell. And he was researching some land parts, you know, up by White Clay area with the nursing homes ad and all that, but due to COVID too, that stopped us in progressing, moving forward. So, and so I believe we have a new administration in, executive board, so we need to, you know, offer them that courtesy of working with us also. So, um, maybe the tribe needs to sponsor this and put some timelines on which we, we could all meet. So that's my, um, comment on the whole issue. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm told. Um, Councilman Steele?
Yeah, you know, I mean, if your district was the first to bring documents, that don't mean it was the first to be agreed upon by the, the group. Because I recall them having all their documents, but still it was never agreed to by all the other districts that they wanted this boundary. And, and that's our, that's what we're saying here. And I'm not saying exclude districts. I really like Davey's idea. I think if we have a meeting and, and not just the districts, I think Davey, if you could include even the council in, in your motion that we have, we all have this meeting within thirty days and not just put it on the district chairmans and I, I, I really like Davey's idea that those districts that agree upon his boundaries, that they approve them. So at least our districts will have those, um, approved boundaries and let Walkbomby and Pine Ridge hash out their issues. But I, I really think that if, if all the, the seven other districts are okay with their boundaries, then I really think we should, we should move ahead with approving those and then, you know, whatever Pine Ridge and Walkbomby determine as their boundaries, you know, they, they could, they could approve that. I mean, it would be great if it's the same time, but if they still can't come to that, that conclusion that this is where their boundaries are, I don't think that should stop the rest of us from approving our boundaries because I'm, I'm telling you from experience, we, uh, we, we know where the problem is with this and it's just those two districts coming together. Because a lot of the people that live east of Pine Ridge, they, they feel that they're part of Pine Ridge, but yet they're in Walkbomby. Supposedly, we don't know, there's no boundaries. Um, so I, I think, um, we need to just include the council in this, this, this next meeting also, the council and the district boards and then whatever districts come together and, and, and figure out their border, their boundaries, then approve them. Um, I, I really like that, that, um, idea, Davey. So if you could include the council in, in your motion, then I think we would, we would be, we, we would, we would be good on it.
Um, great, Councilman. I, I believe that was, uh, Councilman Pugh's motion was to include the council of that as well, thirty days. So.
Okay, because I just heard him say the, the chairmans.
Yeah, okay. I noticed. Uh, so I got Councilman Deputy, or, okay. Um, anyone else, Council? Okay, um, I think Rayanne wants to speak. Okay, go ahead, Rayanne.
Thanks, Chairman. I just wanted to point out the language in the constitution, just, um, it just requires local participation through district hearings. And so if you're, you know, meeting up with resistance through the chairman's organization, you know, just a, a, a simple district hearing with, you know, to allow input from your district members would suffice. So, um, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. And, you know, one of the things, like, if we're going to do this in the next thirty days, you might, you know, if you're having issues in your district is as district council people, you know, taking the initiative to help host those meetings. And, uh, just for, again, for public record, for public input, you know, there has to be something officially done. So, um, but yeah, this conversation, uh, it brings up, I was thinking about the Middle East, you know, and, you know, nineteen forty-eight, you know, basically what they did is, you know, England took a red pen and, uh, they just said, okay, well, here's, this is going to be Afghanistan, this is Iran, this is Iraq, this is Saudi Arabia, this is, you know, and, you know, you see what it costs, you know what I mean? So this is really interesting that, you know, we're having this conversation, but you see the impacts of some of this stuff, you know, and I took that class called Middle Eastern Geography, but it was, it was a tough class, but it was interesting. So anyway, uh, but on that note, uh, anything else, Council? Okay, hearing, hearing, uh, hearing nothing, hearing nothing else, uh, Secretary, if you want to call a vote, please, thank you. Okay, hearing, hearing, uh, hearing nothing, hearing nothing else, uh, secretary, if you wanna call a vote, please, thank you. Oh, read the motion, this for the record, and then, uh, the vote.
Uh, motion made by Davey Puer, second by Ella John Carlo. Um, motion to refer the district boundary issues to the district chairman and tribal council. Um, within thirty days. To meet within thirty days. And land committee. Blaine Little Thunder. Cora White Horse. Yes. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Gerald Canaya Junior.
Yes.
Austin Martin Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior. Ron DeBrae. James Cross.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo.
Yes.
Judge Dima Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Puer.
Yes.
Jackie Sears. Michael Carlo Senior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Fairfield Steel.
Yes.
Craig Dylan.
Yes.
All right, Council, that motion carries unanimously, nineteen forty zero against, thank you, council. Um, so we're on item number eight, last item, um. So we have the fifth member's office for report, Aberdeen Area Office for Report. Uh, Obalala, or Oriate Health Center for Report, while putting no string home. While we try to human resources department, while the tribe's secret staff and while we try to manage his office. Um, so we'll start with, I guess, the fifth member, uh, if you wanna do your. Uh, is there, does anybody have any feedback on his report that he gave? Uh, he did pass it out at the last, at the last meeting, uh, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um. First off, I wanna say, uh, thank you to the fifth member, um, we did host. The, uh, treaty council meeting up there in, um, Bismarck and, you know, it was very well done, it was very well put together. And, um, had a lot of, um, good participation from other tribal members from other reservations. So I wanna say thank you to the fifth member for doing a good job. And, um, also the secretary's office for providing their services, so with that, I wanna make a motion to approve his report.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Carlo, any discussion on that? Uh, hearing none, um, secretary, we can do a vote.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Cora White Horse. Yes. Ryan Tempe Eagle Senior.
Hmm, yes.
Gerald Canaya Junior.
Yes.
Austin Martin Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yeah.
Ron DeBrae.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella John Carlo. Judge Dima Junior.
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
David Puer. Jackie Sears. Jackie Sears. Michael Carlo Senior.
Yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes. Yes.
Craig Dylan.
I guess, yes.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, sixteen yes and three not voting, thank you, council. Uh, so we'll move on to item number B, Aberdeen Area Health Service, Pine Ridge Service Unit, uh, is, uh, Dr. Daphne Eagle on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, um, so, uh, I, I think, uh. You wanna do your report, uh, um, Dr. Daphne Eagle, and then, uh, I'm sure there'll be some, uh, questions.
Sure. Um, this report is mostly, uh, the one that I had submitted on the twenty-fourth, but I did make a. Couple updates to it. Let's see. Okay. Okay, so, um, we know that, um, regarding, uh, this, this is Dr. Jumping Eagle, by the way, and I'm. Giving you the report on, uh, Pine Ridge Service Unit, Indian Health Service. Um, Bethy Wash Day, hope you're all having a good day. Um, the, just to give you an update on, uh, regarding COVID. Um, we know that the OST COVID risk level, at least as of the week of the fourth, we were at the orange level, um. For Great Plains area, the COVID positivity rate is currently, as of yesterday, for seven-day rolling averages at seven point six percent. This is a increase and we've been seeing some gradual increases in the past several weeks. Um, it was five percent, uh, just on August twenty-third within the entire area. And we've had some occasional hospitalizations and transfers related to COVID. Um, but as you can see on the OST Health Administrator's report, um, they are, at least right now, not. Significantly increasing. Um, we do continue to work to be prepared for a potential COVID surge and we're having ongoing meetings here at the service unit. Um, and looking at the processes we had used, um, last fall for when we did have a surge of COVID patients. It is reassuring that regarding, uh, COVID vaccinations. That we've been gradually increasing our COVID vaccination rate for the service unit. At about one percent per week, and this has been pretty consistent, um, and so based on that information, we're at, um. And I can show that to you right now, oh, I don't know if I have it on here, um, I know we have thirty, it's about thirty-five percent. That are completely vaccinated, and again, this is all ages, um, and active users of the service unit. Um, and then we have at least six percent that have had at least one vaccine, so they're not fully vaccinated. Um, so that's for a total of forty-one percent who have had at least one vaccine, so we're. Um, starting to get closer to the forty percent number, and we know that with the CDC and the, um. National numbers, there, the communities that are at. Full vaccination at less than forty percent are at higher risk for, um, COVID surges, so we really wanna continue to. Um, encourage people to get vaccinated who are not vaccinated, um, and. And then also look at the information that had come out, um, from the CDC. And IHS, and we, we have been following up on this and offering, um, COVID vaccination third doses. To those who are immunocompromised, um, and there's a list here, and we did put out a PSA that includes this list. Of people who, um, if they're undergoing active cancer treatment, if they're on immunosuppressive medications. Or have other primary diagnoses that, um, compromise their immune system. Um, then they're would be eligible for a third dose of Pfizer or Moderna vaccine, so. And check out our PSAs, um, that we've been emailing out to everybody and also, um. On our Facebook page and sharing with everyone. Um, and, and you guys are aware, on August twenty-third, the Pfizer COVID vaccine was granted the full FDA approval. Um, and we did, uh, we are following up on the national mandate for federal employees to. Be COVID vaccinated by October first, so we're following up with our employees, um, with a plan for that. Uh, and let's see. Oh, to date, and I haven't had a chance to update these, um, for today, but we've given a total of individual COVID vaccines over twenty thousand. Um, and the boosters are more than nine thousand, um, and the third doses, um, we've given about twenty. I think it's almost thirty at this point, but that's pretty new. Um, and I haven't had a chance to update the national United States. Those who are fully COVID vaccinated are at fifty-two percent, that was as of August twenty-third. Um, and those who've had at least one COVID vaccine, they're at sixty-one percent of those who are twelve and over. Um, currently available, um, the number's actually higher this week and we're, um, I believe we have about. Twelve hundred of COVID vaccines that are currently available and we're continuing to order those on a. Weekly basis just to make sure that we have a ongoing supply of all of the vaccines. And then I do have an updated PSA that was just sent out today. Um, so this, I'll have to update that information as well. Uh, but I can tell you that in the month of August, we had, um, about ten vaccination events. And that for the month of September, we've already scheduled, um, eleven COVID vaccination events. Um, if we do end up having a, uh, surge of COVID patients, then we would be looking at scaling back some of the events. Um, just to keep our, our staff, if they're busy here in the ED or the inpatient unit. Um, will be, uh, but we would notify everybody of that. Um, right now, for, uh, contract health, we've been approving medical priority levels of ones and twos. Um, we've have an average weekly spending through contract health of about three hundred thousand dollars a week. Um, for the visit at the hospital, our average number of inpatients per day for July was fifteen to twenty-third. Twenty-three, it just depends on the day and who comes in. Um, and we have a pretty active, busy outpatient clinic where our average, uh, visits per month. For all of the clinics is about fifteen thousand, but we're getting close to, uh, seventeen thousand for July. And we're continuing to plan with our budgets, um, and ordering additional equipment. Ordering pulmonary function testing equipment, updating the lab equipment. Um, as needed, we're continuing to meet with OST Security Police Corrections, um, and that's been very helpful. In improving communications, um, especially, um, you know, there are a lot of issues going on related to, um. Interactions with security police corrections and the emergency department, we're continuing also to. Um, send a mobile unit to, uh, Kyle and Pine Ridge Corrections on a weekly basis, um, I think. And then we're working on schools for schools, sports, physicals, um, but that's been kind of, uh, trailing off most recently. We did have a mock survey with Great Plains area staff that's in preparation for joint commission. Uh, so we had Great Plains area staff who came to the service unit at all of our locations, August twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth. And they're giving us some feedback in preparation for joint commission surveys, so that went pretty well, we do have some things that we need to work on. Um, and we're working on those corrective action plans. And we're also working on, uh, multiple contracts, um, we do, as we've discussed in the past, have a national. Nursing laboratory technologist shortage, we're also seeing shortages, uh, with radiology technologists. And so we're working with all of our, the contract companies we work with, um, to make sure that we're competitive, um, even at the national level. Um, some of the, uh, other projects, we have the ED construction, that's to be completed by the end of September. So we'll give you guys updates on that, um, and if, depending on what's going on with COVID, um, we would like to have. An open house and show people the full new ED, um, if the COVID rate will allow for that. Um, do you guys have any questions?
Okay, Councilman Carlo, uh, anyone else, uh, Councilman Carlo, uh, Board Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Dr. Jumping Eagle, you know, I, I brought every one of the reports, unlike some of my colleagues, you know, I. I try to be on top of the reports and digest them, so. Anyway, your, your, your report, you know, is pretty extensive. And I appreciate what you're doing here, but I do have several questions. And one of the questions is on referrals, you know, how, what is the percentage that are referred out? And what is the percentage of actual patients that have been paid? And unpaid, have that number, is that possible?
I, I don't have it readily in front of me, but I can get that and provide that to the next, um, maybe both the next HHS and the next. Um, council meeting.
If you could, I think that would be really helpful to all of my colleagues too, because, you know. Every day, you know, people are coming to us and saying that, you know, they, they've been denied, so. You know, I'd like to see those numbers.
And, and the numbers, just to clarify, you said total number referred out through PRC and then the total number of bills paid.
Right.
Okay. And that would be like this fiscal year?
Right. My next question is, my first two, two years of college was in the medical field and I was an intern for two summers, but. Because Bill, the store kept coming to my house every year, I had to do a major, it was a lot easier where I could. Instead of A's, I was getting A pluses, I went into education. But in regards to all of the remodeling that's going on at the clinic. Can you give us an update as to which departments are being worked on?
Sure, um, right now, we have the, um, the ER construction, we're finishing up. We have, uh, construction going on in the behavioral health department and that should be pretty near finished. Um, that was to, um, and, and I don't know, you, you, you guys probably recall that, um, in the midst of COVID. We moved the behavioral health program upstairs, um, and switched them with PRC, so all of the, um. You know, the patient care areas are in general in this. So we did have to make more space for them, so that project is finishing up. Then we have, um, in the surgery department, we're updating our central sterilization area to make it larger. Um, and have more capacity for sterilization washer machines that can process the instruments. Um, so that's one of the projects that's finishing up pretty soon right now. And then we have the ED project that I mentioned, we also have a cooler project and that has to do with the airflow systems, I don't know. But that's going on and you can see that from the outside of the building when you kinda go by, back by, um, where the, uh. The back of the hospital is, um, near, we did the drive-through testing in the past, so. Those are the main projects, we are planning for an additional project that has to do with pharmacy, there's some incoming. Um, regulations that will need to be in compliance with, but they keep postponing the date that we have to be in compliance. But we're planning for that, and that's gonna be a large project that will expand the outpatient pharmacy in Pine Ridge. Um, and we'll also be moving, um, medical records and the business office, um. And coding staff as well, out of that area to another area. There's also, um, projects going on regarding, um, for example, the. La Crete Clinic has had issues with the roof and there's work going on regarding that as well. Um, and then we do have. Um, and then we do have plans to update our um dental clinic um, to, and this will depend on funding, um, to have a specific sterilization area there as well.
Yeah, I have two questions left. One question is, okay, with regard to surgery and the construction that's going on, are we having any type of contamination that's going on during surgery? You know, I would hate to see that some of our patients, you know, get infections that they shouldn't have because maybe our sterilized equipments getting dust particles on them to that degree. Is, is that a major area of concern to you or is, is there no validity to my question?
Um, no, I wouldn't say there's no validity to the question, um, you know, when we looked at the construction for the surgery area, um, we did do risk assessments um with our team um, to review the, you know, benefits and whatever the concerns might be, I mean, we would come up with, well, what if this, what if that, what if that, how are we going to mitigate that risk? So that included um all of those concerns regarding airflow, regarding how are we going to process instruments during that time during construction. Um, so there have been questions like this, and so we have had reviews um, with O E H E, with infection control, with safety, and we've had um area staff come in through O E H E and do evaluations whenever these concerns come up. Um, so initially, um, at one point, the plan was to shut down all of the surgery department. Um, and you know, that, that wasn't uh feasible um for our community, we still have to be able to do, you know, there's some things that we can't control and we are going to have emergencies where we have to be able to provide services to the community regardless of what's going on. And in the medical field, we have to be prepared for all of those contingencies. We wanted to ensure that we're continuing to provide services, so we have uh been continuing to monitor infection rates and we've seen uh no infections, um, so that's uh. So we are doing ongoing monitoring, I think initially there were some communications issues. Um, we have implemented safety huddles, so every, the whole team is aware of what's going on and what the corrective actions are. So that's also a positive thing that's come out of it.
Okay, my last question in its regard to the Martin Clinic. Um, a lot of individuals that go to Martin because it's convenient for them where they don't have to drive all the way to Pine Ridge. Um, a lot of them are saying that even though they're seeing in Martin, they're unable to have medications prescribed to them because we basically have PAs. So could you address that and is, is that a problem that you see or how can we correct that for our membership that goes to Martin Clinic?
I'd have to look at um what's available there regarding, for example, their Pyxis machine, that actually might be more of you know, what are they able to keep there, but there is a physician there, so it shouldn't be a matter of um, oh, there's only a PA there. Um, I know we have physician, most of the time we have a physician um, and a nurse practitioner and um, there might be one day a week where there's one provider. Um, but that, that shouldn't be the issue, it may be more of what we can uh, um, store there with the Pyxis machine. But I can follow up on that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Jumping Eagle, we appreciate, you know, your response to my questions.
Did you say one horse? Give me a new name, I have a time to call me. I, um, Sarah, one of, one of my, the issue that Mike just brought up is, is brought up a lot and I, I I can understand, I was just explaining to him that narcotics cannot be prescribed. And um, the stronger pain medication cannot be prescribed because they don't, they don't do, do, they don't fill those in our pharmacy. So like, uh, my pain medication, I have to, even though it's the same provider that I see in Martin, I have to see in Pine Ridge because they cannot prescribe them from the Martin Clinic. And I don't know, like, that's probably just a policy thing. But I have another policy question regarding um patients.
Can, can I ask you a question real quick? If uh, you're saying that you're being told you have to see another provider at Pine Ridge?
No, it's the same provider. But I was, um, not prescribed the pain medication through Lake Creek Clinic, so I have to go see them in Pine Ridge, which is okay anyway, because it's really hard to get into Martin Clinic.
Okay, cuz I mean, just, I can clarify that with them, but you should be able to be seen at Lake Creek and then they can send the prescriptions to Pine Ridge, that, that's why I was asking that, so I can follow up on that if that helps.
I would think that, but that's not how it works.
Okay, I'll find out more about that.
Okay, um, and the question, the main question that I had was regarding prescriptions as well, you know, with COVID. With COVID, um, spreading and um a lot of our patients, and, and we had discussed this previously, Sarah, but nothing was changed. All, all it needs is the policy revision to allow for um at-risk patients to receive eight supplies of medication rather than the thirty. Like heart patients, diabetics, um, cancer patients, anyone with a, a, an illness that requires constant medication. They still have to go sit at the clinic every thirty days. Or they have to drive to the clinic and sit at the pharmacy every thirty days and put themselves in exposure when they should not be. Um, which I think is kind of unnecessary. I think if you did your policy revision to allow for those patients who are, who are on daily medications to receive ninety-day supplies, I think it would be easier and more safe for those patients, that way we're not putting them at risk. Because you know how it is in the hospital, even with the mask requirements, even with the screening at the door, they're still in the public in a public area where you don't know who's washed their hands or who's touched what or who's sneezed on anything. And we're putting those patients at risk by making them go to the pharmacy every month to get their medication. When we should.
Okay, um, so a couple of things, one is, uh, the mail-out process is available to everybody and they just have to get it set up through the pharmacy where they can uh pick up their pres- their prescriptions can be mailed to them. Um, of course, that does not include um controlled substances, so narcotics or other medications that would fit in that category. Um, the other thing is we do, um, you know, if uh, I would say for sure that we would be utilizing our group side delivery as well, especially if the um COVID numbers start increasing, so those would be our, our first two solutions to that too, and, and I understand the concern about having people come in. Um, you know, when, when it may not be as necessary for a visit, um, and to limit exposures. Um, you know, for the service unit, we do have to balance um the customer service needs, but also um the management of the pharmacy and the ability to bill for um, those services as well. Um, so that, that's part of um what we're going through when we have to look at that um change in the policy. So right now I would encourage people to use the mail-out process and then if we do start seeing increase in COVID numbers, the other thing we had talked about as well was making sure that we had a process in place for people who are on chronic pain management, so that um they are also able to um get their medications in the safest way possible as well.
Okay, um, ideally, those, those would be great, you know. Ideally, if a person's mail was delivered to them, it would be a really good thing to use the mail-out process. But realistically, everybody has to go to a post office. Masks are not required at post offices. Every person in a district, just about every household at least, goes to check their mail daily. So having them, their prescriptions mailed to them is just as unsafe as requiring them to go into the hospital. So that's why I, I really do believe that policy should be changed to allow for the ninety days, ninety-day prescriptions. And you know, there's some good ideas that you just had there, but and we really are, are concerned that people are being exposed unnecessarily. So we need to find a way to, to either slow or stop that exposure. So they don't have to be in the public ar- areas. Because you know, there's a lot of people, because of COVID, they, they're anxious anyway and then making them go to the hospital when their immune system is not as high as it should be and their health is not as good as it could be. It's just causing them more anxiety and anguish and that's not right, we should be taking better care of them. And if a part of that is allowing them to go less times to the clinic to get their medication, then we should be making every effort to make that possible. You see what I mean?
Yes, thank you.
So is it possible? Can you do that revision?
Um, we'll review it, um, but I, as I did state, um, we have to balance, um, and you know, and we can look at things again once, if we are seeing uh increase in the COVID rates, um, that are more concerning. But yeah, I will bring it to the team and review it.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Jumping Eagle. Just real quick, Dr. Jumping Eagle, I didn't get it here, did you do a report on um the personnel on the dentist and Kyle, are we still, don't have no one full time there?
We do have a dentist that we um selected for Kyle and um, I know that they were going through the process, I just don't have their start date in front of me right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And thank you, uh, Councilman Bill. Chair, uh, there's no more questions on?
I, I have a question.
Okay, uh, so we got Councilman Yellowboy, then uh, Councilman Dylan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Dr. Jumping Eagle.
Good afternoon.
So with our recent uptick in our COVID cases, you know, we get the information from the health administrator in regards to keeping track of the numbers. I have this question for you or um the task force members or, or whatnot, but you know, my, there was a question that was raised and, and from our meeting last night in our district was, is IHS keeping track? Or is IHS, do we have known re-infected COVID patients? And are those numbers being tallied into the numbers of COVID currently that the tribe has, or are those separate numbers that we're keeping track? And are we doubling the numbers? And I like stacking the numbers of COVID cases than we actually had versus old versus new, I guess, the question.
So I can see that, for example, if somebody had uh COVID last year and then had COVID now, um, that would be counted as a new case. Um, I guess I'm unclear on um what you mean by repeated um COVID positive testing. Um, from my knowledge, I mean, if we had a person test in two different places within a short period of time, we wouldn't count that twice.
Okay, so are you keeping track on a separate tally sheet of repeats or reinfected COVID patients or are they into one lump sum?
So they would be in one lump, I mean, if, if they had it last year and now they, somebody catches it again, those are going to be counted, that's going to be counted twice as two infections.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilman Dylan.
Uh, my concern has to do with Lake Creek uh clinic there. You know, we, most days, there's one provider down there and it is a bear to get in there if you want to get in and see the doctor. Most times you have to uh wait for four or five days if you can get in then. Uh, we have a nice facility there, I think we could have five or six providers in there, yet we have one on most days. Is there any possibility of getting a more providers for that facility? Because a lot of people are coming there now from across the reservation. And so it would be nice to get more providers, is that a possibility?
Yes, I can review that and give that feedback to our team. I do know that we had at one point been recruiting for a Lake Creek um providers, I'm gonna follow up on that with our clinical directors.
Because we've had some good, good part-time providers in there and then they're gone, and most of them say they would like to stay there, but they're gone, so if that could be remedied, that would be really nice, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get a report back on that after your next report, please, uh, see where we're at?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Councilman, uh, anything else? Um, okay, oh, I, I have a quick question, uh, uh, Doctor. Um, so are you keeping track of all the um COVID patients? You know, who get reinfected and are vaccinated versus the ones who are unvaccinated, are you keeping track of that?
We haven't been keeping track of that right now, that is something that I can um ask them to report on. I mean, cuz it basically would require a chart review on every single um patient, but um, but I can talk with our team and um our case managers and see if that's something that we can add, add on to the, um, and actually that might be something that you, um, we could talk with, uh, Dolores, the tribal health administrator to add to her request. If that's something that, that you want.
Yeah, that would be good to kind of see that, and then this is my last question, then Councilman Steele. Um, and then what is the average cost, like an extreme COVID case, like in terms of the healthcare and all that, what is, what does that usually cost, you know, with the?
I would have to estimate that, I mean, your average um transfer in inpatient um units is between twenty to thirty thousand dollars, so if you're looking at also um ICU care, which is definitely more expensive. Um, and then it depends on the length of the stay, that's probably gonna be fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars.
Thank you, so you're basically saying that, you know, in an extreme case of COVID, it's gonna cost almost fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars versus taking a shot, is that, you know, and whatever the shot costs and all that kind of stuff. It's free, basically, so. Okay, okay, thank you, uh, Councilman Steele.
Yeah, I just have one question, um, Dr. Jumping Eagle, do we have, um, do we have, um, any orthodont?
Uh, we don't have ortho doctors, at one point we were um working on a orthopedics contract, but we've had a really challenging time um finding orthopedics contractors. Um, so that's something that, and then, and then, you know, when we did have our COVID surgery, had kind of put that on. our COVID surgery, had kind of put that on the table because we weren't doing um, you know, for a certain period of time, we weren't doing elective procedures. Um but but yeah, that is a a definitely a need, um and so we'll continue to look for contractors.
Okay, um I take that back. I got another question. Um what about when our ambulance goes out? I was told in our contract that there was supposed to have been a professional that goes out with our ambulance to certain calls that require um more care or I I mean, are we sending personnel out with the ambulance runs?
Um in the past, when the uh EMS would request, for example, if they don't have an ALS and there's a patient who needs ALS, um there have been times that uh nursing staff would go with them. Um but that's been quite a while since we even had access to um an ambulance responding to the service unit. So I'd say that's been more than at least six to nine months, probably.
No, that's okay. Thank that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks, uh Council, uh seeing that, Councilman, definitely go. I'll just move to approve. Motion to approve is your second second by Councilman Watkins and Councilman Yellowboy. Um discussion on that, Council. Uh hearing none, Secretary, if you could call a vote on the motion to approve the uh was the uh IHS, IHS report, um Councilman Jumping Eagle, and second by Councilman Watkins and Councilman Yellowboy.
Wayne Little Thunder?
Yeah.
Cora Whitehorse? Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canario Junior?
Yes.
Austin Rockin Senior? Tyler Yellowboy? Window Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Randy Bray? James Cross?
Yes.
Hello, John Carlo? George Dreamer Junior?
Oh.
Julian Spotted there?
Yes.
Richard Iron Cloud?
Yes.
David Poyer? Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Uh Council, the passes twelve yes three no, one on voting, uh Council. Um I don't remember C as Geraldine on our Councilman put.
So I know she's been having, she has a family emergency. We were told at HHS on Tuesday. Um they did come and give a report to HHS, their monthly report. Um I don't know, Tyler, you have any email, right? We approved it that day. I mean, but uh there was probably seven of us from Council on HHS, so i- if everyone's okay with it, our motion to disapprove.
Uh Council, uh is your second, second by Councilman Whitehorse, uh discussion, Council, uh hearing none, section recall a vote, please.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yeah.
Cora Whitehorse? Yes. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canario Junior?
Yes.
Austin Rockin Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
Yeah.
Window Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Randy Bray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted there?
Yes.
Richard Iron Cloud?
Yes.
David Poyer? Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Uh no.
Uh Council, motion passed thirteen yes two no, one on voting, the Council. Well, good at nursing home, is anybody on? Tiffany, are you on?
Yes, I'm here. Hello, everybody.
You want to do a report, the Council?
Did, did it get emailed? It's just a short report.
Okay, yeah, it was emailed, I think. Does anyone have any questions on that? Uh Councilman, uh, wait, good. Um did you hear the question, uh Tiffany?
Sorry, I didn't hear it very good. Can you repeat it?
Get a little bit closer to it, Michael.
My question was, uh, is is that still an issue with the non-member nursing staff coming out of Nebraska? Not having vaccinations?
No, we're at currently at ninety-four percent vaccinated staff. We have um just a few that still need to get vaccinated, but they're PRN staff and they haven't worked. So soon as they come back to work, they'll have to bring um a copy of their vaccination card.
Uh anything else for Tiffany? Uh it's a motion to approve, motion by Councilman, definitely go second, and like Councilman, by junior. More discussion done, I'm sure.
Wayne Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canario Junior?
Yeah.
Austin Rockin Senior? Tyler Yellowboy?
No.
Window Youngman Junior? Randy Bray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted there?
Yes.
Richard Iron Cloud?
Yes.
David Poyer? Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Still? Garfield Still? Craig Dillon?
Uh Council, that post passes, twelve yes one no, and three not voting, thank you, Council. Uh I don't remember E, Oklahoma City Tribal Human Resource Department. Uh it is a, I know a reporter was passed out, motion to approve, second by Councilman uh Yellowboy, Councilman Jumping Eagle made the motion. Okay, um so uh go ahead, Councilman Carl.
My question is regard to a question that my colleague, Mr. Bray asked about, you know, individuals up at the nursing home. You know, according to uh ordinance mandating vaccinations, I think that those individuals should have already had their vaccination. But my question is, Michelle is on, how many positions were lost uh now unfilled because individuals that did not do the mandatory vaccination and got terminated?
Michelle, did you hear the question? I see she's on, but. Michelle, are you on?
Can anyone on Zoom hear us?
This is Mason, I can.
I could.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you, Crash. Um uh okay, well, I guess um, oh, oh, good, good, uh Council.
Um I I did talk to Michelle previously about what was um what the number was or the percentage. So out of the over almost nine hundred employees, um ninety-eight people didn't turn in the vaccination cards. So that was pretty good. Of those ninety-eight, nine people filed an appeal. So far. And of those nine people who filed appeals, um there was eight for religious and one for medical purposes. And um I believe she said there was only one approved of those appeals. So we're um at a pretty good rate, I would say. And um I know that um there are a few politicals who refused to get um vaccinated, so they are no longer working. And uh there was only a couple of border monitors, which I thought was really good. Who were um and they were just waiting on their second shot. So that was really good. Because they have the most interaction with public. Um so, but I think we're we're at a pretty good rate. And uh we may need to fill some positions. But I think um we got the message out about vaccines pretty clearly now. And uh I know that there was discussion amongst council people regarding some of these positions and people filing appeals because they didn't want to get the vaccine. But I'm I'm glad that they're changing their mind because um like you said, it really is a cost savings per individual and for IHS. We already have extreme costs for taking care of people who are ill without the added cost of something that is preventable. So I think that is ninety about almost nine percent that didn't get vaccinated. Or ten percent, somewhere around there. Yeah, so that's a pretty good rate. And hopefully that carries over into our membership.
Thank you, uh Councilman, uh Councilman Carl, as I answer your question. Okay, thanks. Uh anything else? Uh there's a motion to approve, uh hearing none, no other debate, section, you call a vote, please. Thank you, on the show, on approving the the Human Resources Department report.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse? Yes. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canario Junior?
Yes.
Austin Rockin Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Window Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Randy Bray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Ella John Carlo? Julian Spotted there?
Yes.
Richard Iron Cloud?
Yes.
David Poyer? Michael Carlos Senior?
Yes.
Garfield Still?
No.
Craig Dillon? Craig Dillon? Ella John Carlo?
Okay, uh that was a pass thirteen S, one on voting, three or thirteen S. One no and three not voting. Thank you, Council. Um so moving on to Oklahoma City Tribe Chief of Staff Report, uh Mr. Denise, are you on?
Ella John's locked out, so we're trying to unlock her.
Got one, hold on, I see she's on. Okay, Craig's back on. Okay, uh everyone on Zoom, can you hear us? Okay.
There's Terry.
Loud and clear.
Okay. Okay, I heard you, Councilman Dylan. Uh Councilman Carl, can you hear us? Okay.
Terry, are you on?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, uh so we have your report by Councilman Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question might include um Mason's input to um on this, on this report, it says budget mods are five. But I wanna know if the carryover um reports have been done and the budgets modified to reflect those carryover dollars. Because I know as we talked quite a while ago, a lot of them still had not been done. And I don't know if there's a timeframe that they need to be done, but I would like an insert on that.
Uh do you hear that, Terry?
Yes, um some of them programs, their monies came in, but they weren't budgeted, but they they done their budget mods. They're they're in the system and um then we're it's not coinciding with each other, the grants and the um what do you call it? The grants and comptroller and us, but the program directors have all their budgets. They have their budgets in and they have their budget mods in there, but they just not might not be in their books yet. And the Collins might not have them in their books, but they but they reported to me they're in.
Uh Councilman, good.
Okay, I was just clear that that, you know, those be- Okay, I was just clear that, that, you know, those be addressed too for, you know, the, all different programs that are under the assumption that their accountants are getting this done too.
Me and Dean work close together and if we have a matter, he'll go check on it and then his accountants will do it. So we've been working pretty close together and we work, we co- coincide. So we work together. So if I find something or my director has a problem or if he does, man, he has me make my direct, make the, make the error good and then he does. And then if I tell him, he'll go check on it. So eventually he gets in order.
With that, we approve. Okay, a motion to approve is your second. Uh, second by Councilman Whitehorse, I just.
Another question?
I first and then Councilman Steele.
I just want to say thank you to Terry. Um, you know, this whole issue that we've been having with programs, especially the ambulance service. She has been a very vital port, part of it. And she has stepped up to the plate so many times in the last few weeks. It, and, um, I just wanted to let her know that we appreciate all the extra work that she's doing.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
But don't ask for a, um, special merit award.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that. I do it for the people.
Uh, Councilman Steele?
Yeah, I just want to, same thing, say thank you to Terry for stepping up and, and helping us, you know, with the ambulance. But, uh, I have a question, you know, when, when are we going to advertise the, the, um, ambulance director and, uh, enrollment director, those two, um, um, programs are really vital and I think we need to get it out there and find the best qualified person. But in order to do that, we need to get advertisements going. So I would really like to see that done ASAP.
Um, Garf, I gotta, I got to, I have a question for you guys too. On this ambulance thing, this, what's that guy's name? Um, me and George was just talking about it because I had to write a letter for signing power. And I just got the minutes from August twenty-seventh to give her signing power for the ambulance. But, um, I was thinking, we were thinking that this Jay Johnson, if we do a background check on him, can, remember he was ready to step down tomorrow and come down and help us. He was giving him a two-week notice, Cora. And so I was wondering if we could, um, advertise it or just put him in, put him in or tell it's advertised because he has some very good credentials. And then on enrollment, I've got to up, I'm updating the enrollment director, um, position because it's like twenty or thirty years old and it needs to be updated. And it will get, I will have it in there to advertise soon as we, um, as soon as I get the en- enrollment because it, director's position updated because it is just obsolete. But I will get the ambulance director advertised, but I was waiting on you guys too since you put Dolores in there.
Um, I, I understand you, you probably need to update that, um, that job description, but, uh, I'm hoping it don't take a year. Um, in regards to the enrollment one.
Okay, okay, give me at least a month or two, okay? Because it has to go through grants and HHS and all that.
Okay, yeah, as long as, as long as they're not dragging it on, taking a year.
I'm Garf, I, I will get it done. When you guys tell me to do stuff, I get it done. I don't take a year. But I will get it done in a month and a half. Give me a month and a half to do, okay? But ambulance, if you want me to advertise it, I'll advertise it right away. But I need some, um, direction, Cora, if we should put that Jay Johnson in there so we could get our budgets because we got them, we got them budgets on the ambulance. I can, we're talking with Rebecca Willis and she's given us an extension on that. I think it's the nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. It's thirty days overdue. So I sent her today the Cora, I gave her, I gave her that George is the contact, the contact person. George has all the grants and then I got EIN numbers and registered with Medicare and Medicaid and Grant Solution and the CDC and sent them to George. So I told him to put them in her name. So we'll get that done. I'll get that. But it's, whenever you tell me to, I'll do it. Because you, you guys sort of went and put George in there, so I'll just wait till we can meet or something.
Okay, uh, Councilman, uh, Councilman Steele, uh, does you have your, is, uh, do you have another question? Sorry.
Um, thank you, Chairman.
Thanks, uh, Councilman Spotted Bear, Councilman Jumping Eagle, and Councilwoman Whitehorse.
Thank you, Chair. So in regards to enrollment, because that is a sensitive program and they do hold a delicate, uh, documentation. I don't believe we should have an open-ended date. We should have a solid date for when it's, um, advertised so we can get somebody in there to ensure, um, productivity and maintenance of that office because it has been without a director for some time. Uh, so I'd like to motion to put a solid data. If a month and a half is, is forty-five days is what you need, um, to get that advertised immediately or thirty working days?
Um, I would say forty-five. Um, maybe, maybe I could do it at thirty to forty-five days. I mean, I know I can, but it's just, it just has to be updated and back and forth to the block board.
Okay, so I'd like to motion for forty-five days to have it advertised.
I might have it advertised before that, Julian.
Okay. So give me, give me a date and I'll put that in my motion.
Okay, forty-five days then, okay, but I could probably do it before then.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, uh, we advertise this position in forty-five days. Is that a second or? Okay, is there a second on that? Is there a second, Cora wants, uh, second by Councilman Young, Youngman? Okay, um, discussion, right, Councilwoman?
Um, you know, Terry, um, in the policy, it says that if you make a temporary appointment, you must also submit a request to advertise.
Okay, okay.
You need to look at that and for every temporary appointment you make, you need to submit the request to advertise. So your job descriptions should be updated before you even make the temporary appointment.
Okay, well, she's not getting paid out of enrollment though, so, but I will make that request, okay?
And then lastly, in regards to the ambulance director, I think you and, um, George have been working very hard and getting, um, getting that program moving along. So I support, um, any direction you want to go in, but I think legally you have to advertise, uh.
I, I, I'm ready to advertise it. It's because that, that one's up to date.
Okay, so there's a motion, there's a motion on the floor, uh, Councilwoman, are you still questioning your motion?
Nope, that's it.
Uh, any discussion on that motion? Um, yeah, uh, secretary, can you clarify the Councilwoman Spotted Bear's motion?
Motion to have, have the OST enrollment director position advertised for forty-five days. Within forty-five days.
See, uh, more discussion, see, none, uh, secretary, can you tell the vote, please? Thank you. Well, there's a motion that was made, so. So, okay, Councilwoman Whitehorse.
Okay, if there's a temporary appointment, even if she's assigning someone from a separate office to do the work and they're not getting paid from there, it's still an appointment or an assignment of extra duty, right?
Yes.
If, if you're doing that, you should have already submitted a request to advertise. So I don't think it needs to be forty-five days. If this is for the enrollment office, you should already submit it, the request to advertise. So it should be coming out next week. Is it next week for the advertisements?
Um, uh, as soon as I get off there, get off there, so run to the tribal building to do business, I'll send the email. I'm, I'm going to send an email to Michelle to have her advertise ambulance and enrollment.
Okay, so it shouldn't take forty-five days?
Oh, I'll do it today.
That's the motion. So the motion on the, by days, within forty-five, was, Councilman, is it, is your motion to advertise in forty-five days or within forty-five days?
Within, I'd like for it to be sooner and if Cora, uh, believes it can be sooner, then we definitely don't need the forty-five days because that position's been open.
Um, Miss Spotted Bear, you need to, um, but consider the human resources, even if I do put them in, they have job interviews set up from the, um, from the COVID being closed down. So they got interviews four days a week, five days a week. So when they get in line, but, um, they are prioritized and program director, so we can get it in thirty days, okay?
Okay, that's your word, I'll amend it to thirty days.
Okay. So. Okay. Socialist state, that's all I got to say. So, uh, go ahead, Councilwoman.
There, there's several director positions that are temporary appointments. So I think that they should all be.
Um, there's three.
Okay, which three are?
Um, there is energy and that, that's going to be advertised, um, enrollment, ambulance and Otitis Media is advertised. We, you guys just passed it in HHS, like, HHS, like, two, three weeks ago. So to get it advertised, so that's on the advertisement list, so that was four of them.
Okay.
Otitis Media is being advertised. That's all set to go because we had to change the, remember I was telling you I had to change, um, job description or the qualifications? Because they wanted a four-year RN degree and there's only paying them thirty-eight thousand and they're making sixty to ninety dollars an hour. So then you guys passed it in HHS, it's, it's, it's over, they're ready to be advertised.
Okay, so then what about like job placement? And, um, special ed? And, uh, I know that.
I meant to get them advertised and I got ate up. That's the education committee, um. Wouldn't budge. So me and Dean and Olivia and Michelle went down there the second time. They wanted us down there. So we went down there and we still got voted no.
Okay, uh, Ms. Please, can you keep questions pertinent to this discussion?
Okay, okay.
Uh, going all over the place.
There's a whole list here. I have Terrell.
But is this in the motion? Is this concerning?
It is. It's concerning the motion because it's a director position that should be permanent.
Okay, so.
It's not just enrollment.
Okay, so I'm, you got to clarify that for the motion maker, not me. I'm just running the meeting, okay?
Okay, Julian. The list that I have is for directors that are temporary appointments that should have been advertised by now. Our ambulance service, enrollment, Otitis Media, energy, water and sewer, road maintenance, special ed, job placement.
Water fields too.
Water fields.
That is under Dean Patton.
That job should be advertised.
Temporary, temporarily under Dean Patton. So that's supposed to have a director as well.
No, Corey Mills is a director, but he's under Dean Patton.
I thought he was temporary. I didn't know they hired him permanent. I haven't heard that.
I didn't, I don't, Michelle, Michelle's on, she could answer that.
And, yeah, I think that's all I have on my list. But there's several positions.
I'll accept the amendment because we do need to have those positions filled immediately and with the same discussion we had. Terry, in regards to hire, the hiring process, we need strong leaders in there. People who are self-motivated, who, I shouldn't have to reiterate that. But definitely we've had this conversation with the committees.
Okay, well, the energy director just quit. Ambulance director resigned. So I could get it done. I'll do it.
Okay. Um, so, yeah, Councilman Jumping Eagles. And then Councilman Steele and then Councilman Carl.
From my comment, it was just on the ambulance director part, Chair. Um, we appointed through council action Dolores Puer for ninety days. So I don't know why they would, um, at this point.
So, uh, Councilman, did you have a question about that? Um, Councilman Whitehorse, can you repeat what you just said on for the record?
Regarding the ambulance position that we gave George ninety days to work on. George has another job. She is the director of health administration, which is a huge job already. And, um, I think that we can set the start date if we do advertise. And that would give us the opportunity to find someone who is qualified and encourage them to take the time to apply because with any professional position, you need to give notice. And that would give them ample time to give notice to their position, to their boss. So I think ninety days is a good time to get someone hired.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman, uh, Jumping Eagles, I answered your question. Okay, thanks. Uh, Councilman Steele?
I was just going to say we need more stability. That's why we're doing, taking these actions. So, I mean, if we have to amend that motion to have her temporarily appointed until the, the, the permanent director is selected, then we could do that, but I, I'm in agreement. We need stability, so we need to advertise that ASAP.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Carl.
Thank you, Chair. I, I agree with everything that Cora said. But I also wanted to mention, you know, I, I think that the sooner we get the ambulance director advertised, I think that would give, um, Dolores time to maybe work with that individual. You know, and I think we appointed our, uh, committee, uh, program monitor to that as well. So I think that would be good for that individual that maybe be that gets selected here shortly. So I think that's all, all a good thing. That's all I wanted to comment. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman. Uh, further discussion on this motion. Uh, for the record, so can you read it one more time, secretary, just to make sure everybody's on the same page?
Motion made by Julian Spotted Bear, seconded by Wendell Youngman Junior to have the OST directors' positions advertised within forty-five days. The following is a list. Ambulance service, enrollment program, Otitis Media, energy program, water and sewer program, road maintenance, special education program, job placement program, water fields. Within forty-five days.
Otitis Media is already being advertised.
Okay, thank you. Um, further discussion, hearing done. Uh, secretary, pull that vote, please.
Blaine Little Thunder? Cora Whitehorse? Yes. Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canario Junior? Austin Martin Senior? Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Randy Bray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud? Richard Ironclad? David Poyer? Michael Carlo Senior?
Yes.
Griffith Still?
Yes.
Craig Dillon? Craig Dillon? Gerald Canaya Junior?
If you call me, my vote is yes.
Okay, thank you. Gerald, did you want to vote?
Okay, so, um, for, for the record, Mr. Chair, my vote is yes.
Agreed. Thank you, Carl.
So for the record.
I apologize.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Councilman.
Tyler Yellowboy is yes.
Okay, so fifteen yes, you're not voting, uh, motion passes, thank you. Um, so is there anything else for the Chief of Staff? Okay, so there's a motion to approve the report. Uh, go ahead, Secretary, call a vote please.
Blaine Littlethunder?
Oh.
Carl Whitehorse? Yes. Brian Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canaya Junior?
Yes.
Austin Martin Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Oh.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer? Michael Carlo Senior?
Yes.
Griffith Still?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes, with the, I need to know if uh, motor fuels is a permanent position yet or not. We need that advertised.
Stacy, I'm a yes too.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Council, pass the fifteen yes, one no, one not voting, the council, um, yeah, and so we're on item number G. Uh, Ogozi Tribal Veterans Office, uh, was, was there a report, report that was posted? Okay, she's on. I don't think there was a, a report, written report, so she's on, she's on. Okay, um, Claudia Redner, are you on?
Good afternoon, I am on, um, Chair. So, uh, I would like to clarify first. By council, as I understood it was that it wasn't the Veterans Service Office that was going to be giving a monthly report. It was a report requested at the VA level. Now, if that clarification can be made so I can be better prepared to provide a written report, I can go ahead and do so. And then I will give a report verbally and submit it to Stacy in writing after this meeting, just so you guys have updates from my office.
Thank you, the secretary does have your report, so uh, we could, uh, get that passed.
Okay, um, for clarification, I did have my research team, um, go back through the, um, motions. And on April twenty eighth, there was a motion, um, motion made by Jackie Seer, seconded by Sonia Littlehawk Weston. To add the Veteran Shelter Slat Committee onto the tribal council meeting every month.
Okay, so that is completely different from my program. Veteran Services, Veteran Shelter and Veteran Cemetery and Veteran Committees are all completely autonomous to each other. I am Veteran Services, but I would like to give the council an update as I do serve as the Veteran Service Officer for the tribe. So if you guys would like, I can, excuse me, give a verbal report.
Uh, that's fine. Maybe, maybe under five minutes, so.
Okay, so as of, excuse me, so as of August twenty twenty one, I'll just go ahead and give some brief demographics. Um, I am the only one staff member in Veteran Services. I am the tribal Veteran Service Officer. Uh, Chief of Staff will receive my budget for review. I have went to, I have went to my South Dakota Department of Veteran Affairs Benefit School Training, so I'm fully accredited at the national and state level. Um, uh, Veteran Services have served demographically female veterans, three in the month of August. Male veterans, fifteen in the month of August. Members of the Ogozi Tribe. Non-members are four. The dependents, which includes spouses, widows and children, is seven, in which we were, we served them this month. I did provide everyone an opportunity to allow for a detail, for a report to detail on PII and HIPAA information with assigned ROI. Or release of information, all of which declined, so that will not be included on my monthly report. Um, there is one area of concern due to the COVID nineteen pandemic statewide. There have been a decrease in compensation and disability examinations. At the VA Healthcare Medical Centers in Black Hills, which includes Fort Meade and Hot Springs. The veterans can call the VA if they feel safe enough to attend their comp and pen exams. However, if they do not feel safe. Their date of intent will remain the same until the exam is rescheduled. Now, I did go to uh, the State School, South Dakota Department of Veteran Affairs this past month. And there was an update given by the VA Black Hills Healthcare Medical Center. And what that entailed quickly was that um, Director Horseman, Sandra Horseman will be retiring next month. As well as Donna Schneider, the Nurse Executive. We do have an act or an associate, Associate Director Spencer Meeon. So if there is a need for him to report to council anytime, your point of contact at the VA will be the Associate Director Spencer Meeon. And I can go ahead and include the contact information when I email this report. There are two hospitals, Fort Meade and Hot Springs. There are forty eight acute care beds, eight other geographically separated points of care. And services to veterans include primary care using personalized proactive pack model of care. Mental health care, including veteran specific treatment for PTSD homelessness and substance abuse. Preventative care, including screening for TBI, MST and PTSD, or otherwise known as traumatic, traumatic brain injury. Military sexual trauma and post-traumatic stress disorder. There are social services, specialty care, inpatient and outpatient pharmacy, long term and short term rehabilitation care and telehealth. Only a couple points of care can be found at our local CBAC, our community based outpatient clinic, which does include telehealth. And pre- preventative care, including screening for TBIs, MST and PTSD. So that is my verbal report. If anybody has any questions, feel free to ask. If not, that is all I have for you guys.
Okay, do you approve? Motion to approve is your second, second by Councilman Watkins, uh, questions. Hearing none, um, Secretary, we call the vote please, thank you.
Blaine Littlethunder?
Oh.
Carl Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canaya Junior?
Yes.
Austin Martin Senior?
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy?
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray?
Oh.
James Cross?
Yes.
Oliver John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer? Michael Carlo Senior?
Yes.
Griffith Still?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Our council motion passes sixteen yes, we're not voting. Uh, council, anything else for the other order? I think we're at the end of our turn. So there's a motion to adjourn, there's a second. Second to adjourn, is there a motion, a second by Councilman Ironclad? Um, discussion on that, uh, council, so I know that we're at the end of the reading. Um, I know that Councilman Steel requested that we host session in Wounded Knee. So he's gonna be setting that up. I know we'll give you more details. If not, we'll go at the casino, but just make plans for that, so just FYI. Um, anything else? Um, okay, um, yeah, it was, uh, Secretary, call a vote please, I do.
Blaine Littlethunder?
Oh.
Carl Whitehorse? Yes, Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Gerald Canaya Junior?
No.
Gerald, can you repeat, please?
No.
Austin Martin Senior? Tyler Yellowboy? Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Ron DeBray? James Cross?
Yes.
Oliver John Carlo?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Julian Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Richard Ironclad?
Yes.
David Poyer? Michael Carlo Senior?
Oh.
Griffith Still? Craig Dillon? Tyler Yellowboy?
Other council, that motion passes, thirteen yes, two no, one not voting. Thank you, council, be safe on your way back. Uh, thank you, Kiwi Radio, thank you to our secretary staff, thank you to Jesse and Jedi in my office for filming this. Um, thank you, Councilwoman Whitehorse, for hosting the meeting in your district, uh, thank you, Councilman Dillon as well. Uh, be safe, mask up, you know, wear your sanitizer and uh, be sure to, uh, you know, make sure that you uh, do your vaccination you can. The meeting's adjourned at four thirteen PM. Uh, thank you, council, uh, thank you again.